This work session, regular meeting of the Township Council is called to order. Madam Clerk?
According to the Open Pilot Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey, adequate notice of this work session, regular meeting of the Franklin Township Council was made as required indicating that this work session, regular meeting, would take place at the Municipal Building at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, June 25th, 2024.
And again, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and vote Remain Standing, followed by an invocation from Councilmen Rahma and Barison. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Let us take the next few moments of silence to seek, each seek in our own way, whatever sources of inspiration will grant us the strength and power in our thoughts and decisions to be for the benefit of all people at all times. Amen.
Thank you. We will now... I'm still standing because I'm going to get up. So we're going to have the swearing in of the Police Chaplains.
We've got to take the roll call.
I did it again. In this item, no excuse. Madam Clerk, please call it a roll.
Councilman Barison.
Here.
Councilwoman Fenshaw.
Here.
Councilman Karazi.
Here.
Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Petosnik.
Present.
Councilwoman Deed.
Here.
Councilman Vasanella.
Here.
Councilman Wright.
Now time for Commendations and Proclamations, swearing in of the Police Chaplains.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Captain Sean Heben from Franklin Township Police Department. And today, as they stated, we're here swearing in new Police Department Chaplains. Chaplains are no stranger to Franklin Township Police Department. We've had them here before. However, under the direction of Director Quavella Mayweather, we revamped and updated our Chaplain program. These are three out of the five Chaplains, possibly six, that we're going to be swearing in. And Franklin Township Police Department is a very diverse police department that represents a very diverse community. We also wanted our Chaplains to also represent that diversity. So you'll be able to see here a range of different faiths and a range of different backgrounds to offer those services to not just our police officers, who are in need of prayer at times, and police officers do need prayer. We're people that, you know, are going into the thick of things sometimes. Our officers are people, and sometimes they hurt and suffer as well, as well as members of our community. There are things that happen here that require us to go beyond just going and serving and protecting through whatever we carry on our duty belts. Sometimes we have to really dig deep into helping someone in a deeper way. And that's where the Chaplains come in, and it could be of great support for our agency. So here we have today Rabbi Eli Garfinkel, who has been a Chaplain from way back when, I don't know.
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years. So he has a lot of history here with Franklin. He's been with the Chaplain Program in the past, and he's here with us continuing on to serve today. We have, and he's representing Temple Beth El. We have Reverend Jamin Powell from Community Baptist Church, who is here. And you have some background as well in chaplaincy from a previous Orange County Sheriff's Department. And we have Father Simon El Hajj. Does that say that right? Perfect, all right, from St. Charbel. Not here with us today is going to be Reverend Dante Quick from First Baptist and Imam Said Rizvi from Masjid Ely.
I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the State of New, of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of Police Department Chaplain, the Township of Franklin, going to the best of my ability. Help me God.
Once again, we are faced with our diversity, and we display it here with the other two. And it's, we're better served this way. I'm sure each of you will contribute, and it sounds like you've already done some in the past. Do either of my colleagues have anything else to say? Congratulations. I know you guys are not shy about talking.
Give a man of the cloth a microphone and see what happens.
We can't help ourselves. For eighteen years, the phone, in terms of the chaplaincy program, has been very, very quiet. In fact, there have been no calls that I know of. On the one hand, I hope that the phone remains quiet, because if that phone rings, that's not good news. On the other hand, I hope, and I know that my colleagues and I will be ready to help, should that need arise.
The next item is the 2024 Pride Month Proclamation.
I'm going to ask Officer Pooja Patel to come join me from the County Sheriff's Office. Happy Pride, everyone. This is a proclamation for Pride Month. Whereas Pride Month serves as a time to celebrate the remarkable contributions, culture, and history of LGBTQ+ community, recognizing their resilience, diversity, and spirit in the face of adversity. And whereas despite significant progress, the LGBT+ community continues to face discrimination and inequality, making it essential to stand in solidarity, to advance justice, and ensure that every individual is treated with dignity and respect. And whereas the theme of Pride Month of 2024 is embrace the spectrum, it encourages us to acknowledge and celebrate the full diversity within the LGBTQ+ community, including different sexual orientations, gender identities and expressions, and fostering a more inclusive society for all. And whereas we honor the contributions of LGBT+ individuals in every aspect of life, from arts and culture to science and technology, from politics and activism to business and education. And we recognize that our communities are enriched by their presence and the achievements. And whereas it is crucial to educate and raise awareness about the history, struggles, and triumphs of the LGBT+ community, promoting a cultural understanding, acceptance, and love. And whereas we affirm our commitment to creating safe and inclusive environments for all people regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, and we pledge to continue to work toward equality and justice for all LGBT+ community members. Now, therefore, we, Deputy Mayor Ed Petosnik and Mayor Phil Kramer, on behalf of the entire council, do hereby proclaim June as Pride Month and call upon residents of the Township of Franklin to join in the celebration of our diversity and to stand up against discrimination and prejudice and support the ongoing efforts to secure equal rights for all members of the LGBT+ community. And I just wanted to share a sort of personal note. We had a Pride Month sort of inaugural celebration in the gazebo just a few weeks back. That was very well attended. I think that's going to be something we continue to do in the future, and I invite more folks to participate. If you're interested in getting more involved, definitely let me know. As the first, we say openly gay member of council, because there probably were some folks before that weren't open, or maybe they didn't know, and we want to recognize that as well. It's really important to have strong allies, like the mayor and Officer Patel. And I'm just going to turn over them if they want to share anything for Pride Month.
I just want to thank you guys on behalf of the Somerset County Sheriff's Office. Our LGBTQ liaison Sergeant Han and Officer Ski were not able to make it tonight. But on behalf of the Community Outreach Program, Biased Hate Crimes, we appreciate Franklin Township making this acknowledgement. I think it's very important for everyone to be included, especially, you know, how everything is today in today's day and age. I think it's very important that we give everyone the equal opportunities. So thank you, and thank you all of the board members and council.
I will mention too, we should give her a round of applause. She's a graduate of Franklin, lives in Franklin Township over twenty years. Let's go to Officer Patel. Thank you.
Very quickly, we've made great strides in the LGBT community over the last decades, and I fear that's slipping backwards. So we can congratulate ourselves for where we are, but we need to stay vigilant. Thank you. Okay, it's now time for public discussion. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, if I may make a statement before we start the public discussion?
One second, let's just take the vote. Thank you, though. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say nay. Motion is carried. You want to make a statement before public discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
One moment. If no one has any objection, we'll do this by unanimous consent. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, and thank you, everyone, for coming. We have seen many of you coming and asking the council to present a resolution calling for ceasefire in Gaza, not only by Palestinians, but also by Muslims and non-Muslim community members. We have heard some of you express a fear of bias and bigotry and hate. We recognize that the uncertainty today about the safety of the people in the Middle East, in particular in Israel, in Gaza, West Bank, and South Lebanon, weigh heavily in the minds and hearts of many of our community members. So it's natural for us to be saddened and feel the pain and even shed tears when we see you are coming here and speaking to us in pain and sometimes in tears, or sending us emails sharing your pain as well. I would like to make the following statement as your brother in faith or equal in humanity, as your neighbor, as your friend, and as your councilman at large. As you have heard several times, this council has had a policy to only present resolution to matters relating to Franklin. After President Biden called for a ceasefire, during my June 11 council meeting comments, I suggested council to discuss possibility of reviewing that policy. I discussed the suggestion with council members, not once, but twice, and after thoughtful consideration, it is believed it is the right thing for our town to continue the current policy. I'm sorry if some of you are disappointed to hear this, but this has not been an easy decision for us, especially for me as the past president of Interface Council and someone who always has promoted peace and peaceful coexistence. Let me also mention that this policy is not only just for the international matters, but also applies for other matters in the nation. In fact, one of my colleagues gave an example of Mr. George Floyd, who was murdered by police. And this council, at that time, stayed out of presenting a resolution to condemn his murder. As always, I am committed to help to bring the community together and promote mutual respect. I have reached out to the Interface Council President and participated in their meeting last week. They are planning to have a meeting when several faith leaders will discuss ways to have a hate and bias-free community with mutual respect, to recognize each other's humanity, to care for those who grieve, to pray for peace and justice and mutual understanding so that strained relations can find healing. They are also planning to organize training on bias, hate, and civil rights, most likely on July 31st, starting at 6:00 PM in the Senior Citizen Center. There will be some discussion about mental health impact of bias and discrimination. I encourage all to participate and support the Interface Council's effort. The second phase mentioned by the Interface Council is a possible town hall meeting. Finally, some of you may have remembered the resolution the council issued last December about peace and rejection of hate and bigotry. Copies of the resolution are on the table, and I would like to read the four elements the council noted. "The Council of the Township of Franklin has zero tolerance for any form of hate, bigotry, and discrimination of any kind against any race, religion, nationality, ethnicity, gender, or persons, and is committed to uniting the Franklin community and ensuring everyone feels respected and valued, and asks all residents to respect one another despite our differences and reject any form of hate and bigotry, and wishes peace and harmony prevail around the world. We pray for the war to stop and a lasting peace return to their region." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So now anyone wishing to speak may come up. You have five minutes. No yielding of time, may only come up once. Please address your comments to the council.
Good evening, council members. My name is Shamsa, and I reside at 14 Sebring. We just heard the Health Advisory mention the impact of the crisis overseas on mental health in our community. And I wanted to begin by thanking you for opening the public portion of the meeting, acknowledging the pain in the community. One of the concerns I wanted to address that was brought up by the council members was the worry repeatedly, was the worry that the choice of words can cause further division in the community as something that was holding the council back from, you know, even moving forward with a resolution. Indeed, words are very powerful, but we are overlooking their power to unite such a diverse community as ours. Out of more than 100 resolutions passed in the U.S., I wanted to read one of them, it's a short one, out loud. I will not take the name of the locality, because I want all of us to hear what a ceasefire resolution that represents a diverse community sounds like. Resolution calling for a sustained ceasefire in Gaza, humanitarian aid, and release of hostages, and condemning anti-Semitic, anti-Palestinian, and Islamic rhetoric and attacks. Resolved that the council calls for a sustained ceasefire, provision of lifesaving humanitarian aid in Gaza, and the release of all hostages. And be it further resolved that the council urges the Biden administration and Congress to call for a ceasefire, humanitarian aid, and the release of all hostages. And be it further resolved that the council condemns anti-Semitic, anti-Palestinian, Islamophobic, and xenophobic rhetoric and attacks. And be it further resolved that the council condemns Hamas's attacks on Israeli civilians resulting in the deaths of at least 1,200 Israeli people on October 7th, 2023. And be it further resolved that the council condemns the Netanyahu government's attacks resulting in the deaths of tens of thousands of Palestinian civilians in Gaza. And be it further resolved that the council believes that a just and lasting peace between the Palestinian and Israeli people requires new leadership on both sides and a willingness to commit, and commitment, to negotiate in good faith. And be it further resolved that the council urges the international community to work with Palestine and Israeli people to find a just and lasting peace and to conduct a full investigation of the conduct of all parties in this conflict and hold all parties and individuals who have overseen or engaged in war crimes and international human rights violations, including but not limited to gender-based violence and killing of children accountable. For anyone wondering, this resolution was passed in January of this year in a West Coast city of about a million residents. And I'm just curious if anyone found anything controversial or divisive. Is this a resolution that you can stand behind? I want to remind everyone that while we wait for what is the most harmless action that can be taken, a ceasefire resolution, children continue to be massacred. Children like Hind Rajab, who waited in her car, a car full of her dead relatives for rescue, but instead was killed, I think last we heard, by 335 bullets. If they're not killed, they're left injured without limbs, you know, for a lifetime of disability. There are countless who are trapped under rubble and countless children who are orphans. The resistance or the reluctance to call for a ceasefire resolution, to me, I am, because, you know, I've been an educator for a long time, is strange to me. I understand your policy, but I think we can all agree that it is important to collectively voice our stance against the senseless death of children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening. Manish, this is about 146 Emerson Road. I came here tonight not knowing what resolution being presented. Thank you for the people who presented this resolution to have ceasefire. But I wanted generally to talk about this and what is happening in our own township. I just had a few hours ago talking to a friend who's also a realtor in the township. And she told me that she's leaving the township. She has been living here much longer than I have been here. She's an African-American woman. She has been forced to send her mother to California from here, and she is moving herself out of the township. And she said to me that there are many people who are leaving the township because of the right-wing reactionary, and I'm adding this fascist group of individuals that are in the township as harassing the neighborhood. For example, I was told, and I haven't observed this, but I can easily understand it, that there is a neighbor of this friend had had a big megaphone of some sort a night before, two nights before, at his house at night, and having all sorts of right-wing reactionary discussion and music and everything else there. And I said to her, why did you call the police? She said, I would not call the police. She's scared. And to me, and most of you know me, I am somebody who works on human rights. And it's offensive to me, for example. I don't know if we have, township has any limitation to the signs of the signs posted in the township, whatever signs they are. There is an offensive sign on the Mott Lane. Huge sign. I have sign on my, many of you have seen, I have sign. Usually I have peace and justice signs. And, but this sign is overwhelming. People have called me, said, have you seen this sign? Because I usually don't go to the Mott Lane. I use Emerson Road to go in and out. And also there is, I was told again by this friend, that on the corner of New Brunswick Avenue, Ascita Grove, this business has taken its American flag down and put right-wing, you know, celebrity time type of flags all around there. I don't know what we can do, but I thought it is my job. Especially my friend said, I'm not going to do anything. I said, but I cannot sit quiet when I see people are going run out of this township because a bunch of people, for whatever reason, whatever purpose they have, they're harassing the community and forcing them to leave the community. And that's why I came here. And I would like to see, I would like you to discuss it, do whatever you can do with it. If I, I would not be, I can't be quiet about this. I have been crying for seven months for Gaza. It's unacceptable that in, for years and years and years, I've said, people didn't know when Holocaust happened. But now everybody, the whole world knows that Holocaust is happening in Gaza. And it's going to expand, seeing that it's going to expand. I cannot be silent, and I would have my voice all the time here. From now on, I'm going to come here and go everywhere, and I'm willing to do work with anybody and everybody who wants to work on these issues. So we stop people from leaving. This is absurd. 2024? People are leaving their home because they're forced to leave home, their home, because they're making their life miserable? It should be unacceptable. One thing that has been on my mind to come to the council and talk about is about the green resolution that we have. What's happening with that? Is it being implemented?
Answer questions afterwards.
Okay, so that's what my question. Thank you for listening. I know this, what I just said brings pain to everybody who has lived here. And I know everybody here has been trying to make this, bring us to the point that we have the diverse community that we are, but I needed to talk about this and bring it to all of our attention. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
You, anyone else? On forward.
Thank you, everyone, and good evening to you. I happened to notice that there was a debate on this issue a few days ago while I was in Kettlemans having a bagel, because they have the Franklin Reporter over there. I didn't even realize that this was a topic that was being discussed at a council meeting. And I respect your decision not to make a specific decision, a council decision, on this particular matter. However, however, for some reason, many people have forgotten that there was a ceasefire in Gaza. It ended on October 6th, 23, by a horrendous attack on Israel. I'm sure the people who somehow did not remember that are undoubtedly unaware of the fact that years ago Israeli troops came into Gaza in order to remove any Jew who was still living there, because they knew they could not live in Gaza. There would be no peace amongst the people if Gaza were to be ruled by Muslims, by Arabs, by Islamists. So they left, and they left, and there was no Israeli presence there. Only, only when at the border, there was a great many instances of border attacks. Something had to be done about that. We know about borders in our own country here. So in any case, there was... So in any case, there was obvious, obviously the IDF did get involved when there were border attacks. Okay. I think I should also remind people that Hamas did not end the war on October 7. If you were to read most of the media, you would think that attacks were only occurring from Israel. Nothing could be further than from the truth. There are still Jews that are in Gaza. They are all called prisoners at this particular time. And they are being mutilated. And they are being mutilated. So I must tell you that I very sincerely, I very sincerely care about innocent people who are being hurt or even, or murdered worse. I am not asking you for any resolution. I am asking you, a council resolution, let's put it like that. I'm asking you to kindly look into your heart, your head, determine what you feel is right and discuss it individually with your own groups, your families, your friends, your coworkers, whomever, and do the right thing. This is it.
Ma'am, you have to speak into the microphone. You have to address Council.
Okay. Can you read it?
Demand Hamas surrender. That is what has to be done. They haven't, they haven't shown any size of a sign of adhering to any kind of ceasefire as they are continuing to fire weapons at Israelis and continuing to mutilate the hostages, even probably if they are dead. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, Council, Doc Cunningham, Elm Street Court in Somerset. I stopped by today in person to express my thanks to some of you individually and probably to most of you collectively for the chance to gain your guidance and support over the last five years with C America in Color. As you know, C America in Color, as we call it SAIC, is a social edge campaign and platform that brings a better picture of civic and social issues for a higher level of citizenship. And I'm grateful, and I won't call you by name, but you guys know that I've worked with you over the years, and I just stopped by to say thanks. And I know there are monthly updates that are shared via email, and some of you receive those, those updates, and I will acknowledge you as well there. But every now and then, I think it's helpful to stop by in the flesh, in person, to look at each other eyeball to eyeball, just to express my appreciation. I had a chance to attend the Juneteenth event recently hosted by the Somerset County Board of Commissioners. And let's just say it was an awesome event and a number of public officials were gathered there that actually got honorable mention. And one of the performers mentioned something that struck with me. She said that as a community and as a nation, we need to elevate, we need to raise the relevance of civics in the public space. And as you might imagine, that felt like music to my ears. It, I felt like I was in the right place at the right time. So I wanted to stop by today to share with you a public interest proposal along those lines that basically has two elements, two broad elements. One is, takes a page from history, so it's a historical look back, takes a page from the summer of 1787, when our founders got together and laid out what I like to describe as a vision for the republic based on citizenship and leadership. And one of the things we're drawing from that will potentially lead to a resolution, and I, I hear that word called quite a bit today, that a resolution that speaks to even some of the ethnic and cultural and civic conflicts that we're dealing with today. The second, the other side of it is a call to action. And that call to action, I believe, will leverage the participation and involvement of public officials, public servants across all levels. So I just stopped by to share that in brief. I will be sharing more information with some of you via email. So I didn't want it to drop in your inbox and it says, what's this all about? At least you have a preview of things to come. And I'm hoping to have your support as, as many of you have shown over the last five years. Let me leave you with this. If, if 50 years from now, or 100 years from now, someone in your seat were able to look back and say, you did something monumental, something pivotal in the life of this country to advance civic ideals and greater public good, would you want to be in that number? And so I leave that thought to you, and I look forward to chatting and exploring this conversation further. Thanks much.
Benjamin Guy, pretty much I just want to highlight.
That was, please?
The young lady didn't state her address, not trying to be disrespectful.
And I missed it.
And she didn't even state her name, so I understand. So I'm not trying to be disrespectful. So.
35 Patton Drive, Anne Marie.
See, you got it. See, you, you guys all know, so I don't have to repeat.
So I made a mistake. I'm sorry.
So we're good. I just want to be consistent. So real quick, just for, just for noting events that are coming up during the timeframe, I know we, Mr. Von Lucker probably highlighted this, but just want to make sure the community was, where for, was going on for July 4th weekend or July 3rd that we're going to be highlighting here again, also in August, also in August, we're trying to look at National Night Out, just to make sure that if there's anyone who wants to participate with that, with the police department that wasn't brought up yet, and also Week of People Festival that will be coming up in August also, because that is one of the things that people can plan for, that the, the community can come together on and actually work together on for events at all. Second portion, I just wanted to, wanted to put this out here because this came up in a Hamilton Street Board meeting during the timeframe with, with two of the council people, and they can comment on this afterwards, was that, one is if there's advisement on how we handle certain things at all, I would like to get a consensus from the town council about recommendations to improve stuff. I'll take example from Hamilton Street Board, whether that's the planning board or any of the other boards that we, or subcommittees that we have. Some of these committees are involved for extended periods of timeframe, and they've been established for a long period of timeframe. So sometimes we need to reassess how they're being handled and what they need to be done and reassess how their, how their performance will be in on in the future. I'm asking the town council if you have recommendations, because it was brought up during the Hamilton Street Board meeting, to actually say, if there's a consensus report that you can give to us, that we can actually review on recommendations that you guys want us to take care of, please do that and have it done probably over the next two months, because we won't be meeting again probably until August, so that we can reassess and look at that for advisement going forward in the future. Because as we move forward, I want to make the recommendations for things like Hamilton Street Board to be labeled, and this goes back to the town council again, as a Main Street District. Because again, we don't really have a Main Street District in here, but with all the development that has happened there, we need to maybe classify it as a Main Street District so it can be regulated around the state in the correspondence with the Main Street District followings at all, so that it can be funded and it can actually be properly done in the future to actually be handled that way. So that is something that the, that the town council can make a recommendation for, because in their bylaws, when it was actually formed, it was formed in the, in the essence from the town council's recommendation back in 2014. So that is something that can be actually reassessed and redone altogether. That would actually help to improve with funding acquisitions, actual community programs and social initiatives that actually can be done over there, whether that is for housing, housing reforms that we actually need to be done during, in a period of time going forward in the future, which is part of the correspondence that we need to look at for affordable housing reassessments that's coming down the pipeline at the end of this year. So that is a recommendation to the council to actually look at and maybe mandate that that is something that the, the Hamilton Street Board actually looks at and does for the whole city. So that is, that is one thing that I would make a recommendation. Second portion is that, this is going to Mr. Von Lucker altogether, is that for what we're doing, as we see all these railways improvements that are going on, I just want to see where we're not, we're talking about infrastructure, spending and actually improvements that are going on in the city. Is there a way that we can have a posting that's supposed to happen over the next seven, three to five years, that we can actually put up so that the city or the township knows exactly what's going on, whether that is railways or anything else, so that the city can actually make correspondence, information relayed to other people that are in the areas, whether that is elders or anybody else that might not know that certain roads might be blocked off at a certain timeframe, or there's real work that's going to be done in certain areas. I know we were trying to approve and do sidewalks, but I would like to be a little bit more informative because we are expanding and there's a lot of construction that's going to be done, especially with housing developments that are getting approved in their planning board. So I would like to make sure that that's being done. And then the second thing, the last, last recommendation that I actually wanted to say is that for, because we have a public health crisis that was just labeled out by the, I think, the, the health advisor for, for the United States at all, saying that gun violence was one of the biggest epidemics for youth at this specific timeframe. I would like to look at how we're going to have, how to handle this from a mental health standpoint, as far as advisement, not a legal standpoint, going forward with the youth and as to advisements going forward in the future. So that is one of my recommendations going forward at all. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Mohammed Salaudin. I'm resident of 120 Delmonica Avenue.
Thank you.
Very much, okay. Respected mayor and council members, just wanted to put certain points before the council members to, especially on the record, respected speaker, the senior citizen here, talked about the, doing something about this ceasefire and all this thing, about the conflict that's going on in Gaza and all. One thing I just wanted to make sure that, please remember that history did not start on October 7. It started long before that one. The oppression of the Palestinian people started somewhere in 1948 with the Battle for Resolution, or even before that one. And it is something that, what is taken out of context here is what's happened on October 7. I, we all agree that it is heinous crime. It's not a, it's not a good thing that has happened, but what is the impact of that? Now, what's a retaliatory thing that Israel had done to the innocent children, 35,000 children? One small kid getting 355 bullets? I mean, can you imagine that one? And also recently, many of you must have seen, I mean, Israeli soldiers in a van tying up a Palestinian person or Palestinian wounded because they wanted to have a human shield. Is this humanity? I mean, somebody's talking about something which has happened on October 7 as if that's the start of everything. No, it's not the start of that issue. This issue goes back to long before than that one. And if someone comes to my house and occupies my house and says, you have to be a slave to me, or you get out, how can you feel, ma'am? You should be able to put yourself in the shoes of the people who are suffering there, not because somebody's mistake, they have given that one. It cannot be taken as a reason for justifying all this, heinous action and crime. So I just wanted to make it clear to everybody, including the eminent speaker who just said that makes surrender and all this thing, let's get out, please get out of Gaza. Please leave them under the, under their own rule. Then it will be easier for everyone to live in peace. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Dan Kraschinsky, Chief East Franklin Volunteer Fire Department. My address is 638 Nassau Street, North Brunswick, New Jersey. I've been the fire chief in East Franklin for 24 years. I've been born before this council would give them two proclamations. My fire department is very well recognized, not only in town, but through the state and other places that I travel to teach other fire departments about recruitment and retention, how to get members and how to keep them. Currently, East Franklin has 65 active firefighters, which is probably the most in any fire company in the state of New Jersey. With that being said, over the past couple of months, we've had some contract issues with the Board of Fire Commissioners. And going back and forth with some news reports and some bad information was passed along and some contacts from people from the Democratic Committee sending me text messages and other committees saying, well, there's two sides of your story. So one of the things I want to bring to light is one of the things that is a policy that the board just recently passed, that they changed the last hour of drinking from eight hours to four hours. So if you had a beer at midnight, you weren't allowed to get on a fire truck till 8:00 AM. The Board of Fire Commissioners changed that to four hours. In 2006, we had a line of duty death in Franklin Township where that individual was given a federal claim by the federal government. He did not have alcohol in him. Everything was okay with that. His family got the money. By them changing that policy, God forbid there's another line of duty death, four hours is no good. So you could see why we as the firefighters at East Franklin are upset with some of these policies. New Jersey State Title 40A says, "The Board of Fire Commissioner's job and function is to provide fire apparatus equipment and manage the fire district." They have no say on the fire scene. They can't tell me where to park a fire truck. They can't tell me what to do at a fire. Three of the five policies they tried to pass had to do with me operating on the fire scene. That's one of the reasons we didn't sign the contract. The other reason we didn't sign the contract, and I, I see people, you know, talking on the street about cameras and fire trucks and chiefs cars and that, and this, that and the other thing. We've had cameras in the fire trucks for the last 15 years with no policy, with a sticker on the dashboard and a sticker in the back of the truck that says, you are being recorded. We're okay with that because everybody knows that. What they just tried to do now is put a camera facing forward, a camera facing backwards, and at any point in time, a fire commissioner can turn on your phone and zoom into your car without you knowing it and hear your conversation, whether I'm talking to the mayor of Franklin, I'm talking to the mayor of North Brunswick, I'm talking to my doctor, whatever it is, without any notice. We got in touch with an attorney, we hired an attorney. She put a stop to that because it's a New Jersey law of wiretapping. There's a one-on-one, I know I'm being recorded. I don't have to tell the person that's sitting next to me to be recorded, but if a third party zooms in on my camera in my car, it's a third party. So not everybody knows you're being recorded, which is against the law. That's why we didn't sign the policy. The other reason we didn't sign the contract is that for years, for 20 years I've been there, it was in the contract that the chiefs and the commissioners sat down, they came up with policies and procedures, and when you got to the head, you agreed or disagreed, you went back to the drawing table and you fixed it and we moved on. They removed that from our contract. So it says, if the fire chief doesn't like the policy or procedure they put in place, they have 30 days after it's adopted by the board to send a letter opposing it. That's putting the cart before the horse. And realistically, when they're trying to pass policies about being on a fire scene, how can you sign the contract? They have no jurisdiction on the fire scene. Their attorney resigned. We've been trying to meet with them for two and a half months. We offered an olive branch to meet with them. I sent a text to one of the commissioners yesterday. They don't want to meet with us. Now that they don't have an attorney and they gave us a 60-day grant on time, before they hire an attorney, our time is going to be expired. And then what do we do again? Guess I'm done.
Thank you, chief.
Okay. So you have my emails? Anybody wants it, contact me directly, please. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Good evening.
At this point, I'm not new to this Township Council meeting. Uh, my name is Ayesha Ali at 20 Supercourt. Um, I, I know I may, I may appear to be redundant, but I cannot satisfy my conscience by any other way, so I'm just going to ask again, even though I understood the, uh, the statement you made at the beginning for asking for a ceasefire resolution. I realize that the previous responses are indicating it's not in our lane, but we had a glimmer of hope when it was suggested that the council response could be in support of our President Biden, who has called for a ceasefire. With hearing about children losing limbs each day that this war progresses, I feel compelled to continue speaking, and it compels me to come each meeting to know that the stories and experience of these children and other innocent people are not getting lost in the rhythm of our daily life. This horror continues and gets worse each day as it continues, and the humanitarian crisis is so incredibly terrible that even news outlets are not covering it fully. But that does not mean it's not happening. So, and if this, so that's the reason I just make a statement because I just don't want it to just get washed away. But if the ceasefire resolution is still seen as not relative to this council's office, I supplement with another request. Because Franklin Township is so diverse and comprises of citizens that are impacted deeply by this conflict, we ask the township to keep talking about Palestine, not just for its Palestinian residents, but by all those residents who are hurting by what they know is happening to others right in front of the world's eyes. With each passing day of this war, Palestinians and their culture is being wiped out in Gaza, churches, schools, museums and so forth are demolished or destroyed. The people of Palestine are dying each day, but their stories should not. We want to make Franklin Township a Palestine-friendly town. We want to be able to talk freely about our culture, our strive for freedom, peace and right to exist without intimidation or harassment or indication that we're acting divisive. So going back to your peace resolution, and also we talked about some other approaches that we can take, such as an interfaith vigil, um, a town hall meeting, you know, these are good steps that we can take in that direction, um, so that we can talk about our feelings and our hurt and, and, and also to keep the story alive. Let's normalize discussions and references to Palestine. Let's advocate for literature in our township libraries that talk about Palestinian history, its culture and its people. Let's carry out our interfaith vigil, our town hall, where we can address our feelings and why we feel pain. Let's celebrate Palestinian culture through classes on embroidery, cooking and art that represent the traditions and contributions of this culture and how it is added to the diaspora of Franklin Township. Let's include in our Franklin Township events like Franklin Day, where others can see and learn about these people and their struggle for a voice. We, there are Palestinians here and it is part of our Franklin Township heritage, so it should be okay to speak about them in other ways besides the war. Let's introduce a resolution that protects our rights to speak, to voice our concerns and iterate the story of Palestine. Together with the councils and the town support, let's weave in all the different traditions of our backgrounds, all our personal narratives into Franklin that represents each one of us. And I think that should be in line with what you're advocating for. As you can see, the purpose of a peace resolution, the purpose of this interfaith vigil and this town hall is to achieve that goal where people of all different ethnic backgrounds can be free to express themselves and live freely without having to be scared or intimidated. So I hope we can take steps toward that, if not a ceasefire resolution, but at least these steps that can help tell the story of Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Arnold Litsky. I reside at 13 Dalton Drive in Somerset. And this is my first, uh, attention to your council meeting, but I was attracted by the overwhelming concern that I detect in the community regarding the matter of Gaza and Israel. And indeed, there is a war going there. And to restate the obvious and often stated comment that I know of, I don't have any more inside information than most people. If the hostages, those who are alive and dead in the hands of Hamas were to be returned today, the war would be over. There would be no need to ask you or anyone else for a ceasefire. The Israelis have been pretty clear. They want hostages and they will stop. I had the pest inspector come to my house today. He's going after a mouse. First time I've seen him in all the time I've lived there. But what happens? If I want to get rid of that mouse, I will have to put up traps and to prevent any other mice from coming in. And I will go after all those who dare to come in. And I think that there is a history, as one gentleman has pointed out, of, uh, one-sided harassment of the other side. That is to say, there were bombs and missiles being thrown from Gaza into southern Israel for years, typically with few responses. But when the response has occurred, everybody wants to halt, stop and have a ceasefire. You bring the heinous criminals in and now you're punishing them, their relatives and all the unfortunate children. That is beyond regrettable. That is a horrible thing to happen to innocent Palestinians or to any other peoples. But you have to consider who has started this and what are you asking? The October event was beyond humanity. It was horrendous. The only comparable events I know of are perhaps in Africa, perhaps in, uh, in, in Germany and Europe. It was beyond comprehension. Now, the reaction is terrible and severe, but the numbers are nothing. You had 1,200 people in New York Times today who dying from heat in, uh, in the Hajj in Saudi Arabia. War is awful. War is terrible. Nobody wants war unless they are hate mongers with no other value in life but to destroy another people, to destroy a stable people. I want to remind this gentleman, whoever else has spoken, there are many Arab and Muslim members of the elite in Israel. People are able to rise. There is not the hatred and prejudice for people who retain civil attitudes and humane decency towards other human beings. I'm all in favor of peace. I'm all in favor of ending war. I'm all in favor of understanding that there's a simple step now to put an end to it. Turn the hostages over and I willing to bet, the Israelis will not bomb again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing?
This is my first time here. I haven't spoken yet. All right. I know, but it was, it was about a month ago, so. Good evening, Council and Mayor. Uh, my name is Samina Satar. I live at 18 Barbary Court, Franklin Township. I wanted to respond to some of what I've heard here today first, and then I'll get to what I wanted to comment on. I think it's unfortunate that people only see what they want to see. You know, um, someone mentioned that, you know, what happened on October 7th was the worst that has ever happened. But I think, you know, it seems like then they don't care about the massacres that occurred in there, Yasin, the massacres that occurred, um, in Gaza and other parts of Palestine for many years. Um, and to say that, you know, Israel doesn't sort of respond to things, I think it's just deluding ourselves. Um, if you actually look at the facts and, you know, any human rights organization around the world will tell you the facts, um, and they're very clear, that it's very one-sided and we're funding all of it with our tax dollars. I, I often come here just to update you on the crisis in Gaza because we've been, you know, asking for a ceasefire resolution for some time. Just today, Israeli airstrikes killed 24 people, hitting two schools, hitting evacuation centers, hitting tents for displaced people. Um, Israeli soldiers have been, uh, have killed Palestinians in the West Bank, not even in Gaza. Um, and half a million people are at risk of famine, according to the UN Human Rights Organization. Children are dying in their parents' arms from hunger because humanitarian aid is not allowed into Gaza. Um, and I say this because right now, you know, I and others have been, uh, speaking up, um, about what's happening over there, um, in, you know, this forum and other forums. Um, but there are now two bills in the New Jersey Senate, um, that would define antisemitism to include the things that we've been saying, to include, uh, and criminalize, um, how we've been trying to stand up against, uh, what the Israeli government is doing. Um, and, you know, to basically, you know, make all criticism of Israel and Israeli policy, um, conflated with antisemitism. So I wanted to just ask the council if they would consider, um, passing a resolution that defines antisemitism in a way that doesn't, um, stifle dissent and, you know, will allow us to have, uh, these conversations because as it would seem, you know, uh, currently the trend is to stifle any Palestinian support, um, and, uh, as it seems to pass bills, uh, that would criminalize pro-Palestinian speech. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand when you said stifle defense.
Dissent.
Dissent, oh. Anyone else? Seeing no one else come forward, may I motion to close the public portion of the meeting? Motion to close public portion?
Move. Second.
Moved in second. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion is carried. Public session is closed. We address a few things. First of all, thank you, Dr. Karazi. Um, my heart and brain is with you. I think that was very well said. As far as the, uh, complaint from Mrs. Sabah that someone was living next to somebody with a megaphone, et cetera, uh, Mr. Von Lacher can later can, um, do his usual speech of, you have to call the police. You just, you have to call the police. I can't, I can't make things just go away. Uh, our police sometimes can. So I'm not blaming the person. I feel bad for what she has to do, but you have to call the police. As far as the sign on, on, um, Mont, um, it's his right, but that doesn't make it right. But it's his First Amendment right, even that word. First, uh, the Supreme Court has said you cannot have vulgarity, but by that they mean pronoun. So, uh, I don't want to give it too much oxygen. If you want to call me, I can tell you more details, but I don't want to give that more oxygen.
And Mr. Mayor, I'll address the flag comment. Ma'am, you've had your opportunity. There's no other opportunity to speak. Ma'am? I am using a microphone and I'm telling you that you need to remain silent now while council addresses the comments. Thank you.
Ma'am? I will, I will use the microphone.
I will also address the flag because I think there is certainly a great deal of misunderstanding regarding the flag that's flying at the corner of New Brunswick and Cedar Grove Lane. And I will inform this audience exactly what that flag is and the family who's flying it. If you'd like me to do it now, I'll do it now.
No. Actually, let me finish.
Sure.
And then you can do all the things you need to do. Um, did you want to address the green resolution?
Yeah, I think what you were referring to was the energy aggregation. Yeah. So, um, the way that the Board of Public Utilities works is on a three-year rolling average for energy prices. And with the war in Ukraine, which has skyrocketed fossil fuel prices like oil and gas, um, which are a major component of how we get our energy, um, they have just kicked in on the rolling average. Those prices have started to come down, so the rolling average now is, is higher, but may not be, according to our energy expert, high enough for us to be competitive because according to the, what was passed by the public, it needed to be 10% cleaner, so, you know, um, wind your solar and 5% less expensive, uh, for us to go forward with it. So she's recommended that in the end of the summer, um, that we put together the specs to go out in the fall. So that's kind of the new plan for based on market conditions. So that's where we are. But I can think around the corner, we'd hoped to do it two months ago, but the market wasn't ready. And they're waiting to see basically how the, um, other auctions go this summer, some of the folks that are in the hopper. We're just looking for the same type of energy. Yeah.
It troubles me, thank you. It troubles me that people don't feel they can speak freely. I guess we had an example of it tonight. Uh, we had, uh, people from two different viewpoints, uh, speaking and it remains civil, so I appreciate that. Okay, I'm going to move on to the fire department. The, I, I've spoken to the chief several times. Council has no authority here. We, there's, we don't control the fire departments. We collect their taxes, but we don't, it's not up to us whether we give them to the district or not. Uh, then the district, um, I won't go into the whole economics of the fire system, but we have no authority over the fire departments. I have, however, talked to every commissioner in town for, starting with the, uh, statement that I have no authority, uh, but I am, uh, am the mayor and so I certainly have an interest. I've spoken with the chief, as I've said, and I've spoken with the governor's office about it, so I'm keeping them informed about it. Um, I've also said I will not take a side on it and so I won't. But, uh, I am aware of it. The manager is aware of it. Any council member who wants more information, I am happy to speak to them. But we, we are keeping an eye on it and I, what I want most of all is that, um, that they come to a resolution so that, uh, they sign a contract. I think that's all our comments on right now. Manager, do you have more?
I, uh, just, I, I wanted to address Ms. Abah's comments about someone making a comment about the flag that flies on the business at the corner of New Brunswick and Cedar Grove and that it has some nefarious meaning. Um, the flag is referred to as the Christian flag. It, it is, in fact, I'll read, it is the flag that was adopted by the United States Federal Council of Churches in 1942. It's being flown on a flagpole on the, the business owned by a family that I believe it is the longest-running commercial business here in Franklin Township. Um, they are, um, very much a God-loving family, very active in their church, and I don't think that it has any, could, or could even possibly mean anything in any negative way other than their love of God. It is literally called the Christian flag and it was adopted by the Federation of Churches in the 1940s. So I don't know who is spreading rumors about this family and the flag that they have on their flagpole, but I would ask that they stop. I've known this family for my entire time working here in Franklin Township and I can give you every assurance that they're nothing but very much church-involved, um, peace-loving and, and community-minded family. So I think you should tell whoever told you that, that that's what that flag is. And I, other than that, anything else will be in my report.
Any council members? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Ms. Sabah asked about the size of the sign and I think it's worthwhile for you to know that.
Four feet by eight feet. And the measurement of the sign has already been determined to be less than what is the mandatory. the mandatory maximum sign permitted in Franklin Township for a political sign. Ma'am, I can't, I'm, I'm, I'm telling you that everything about this sign has been determined to be legal, not only by our police department, zoning department, but also by the township attorney. That's why, ma'am, ma'am-
Ms. Sabah, you can't. No, no, Ms. Sabah, Ms. Sabah can't. Believe me, when that sign went up, we paid attention and we did what we could do. Okay, time for council comments. Councilman Karazi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. First of all, I attended the Juneteenth celebration. It was a great event and the other one was the high school graduation. So congratulation for all the high school graduates, especially our councilwoman Udine's daughter, and congratulations on that. The HRC meeting is coming up tomorrow and there will be some discussion on homeschooling and New Jersey National Guard, and Ms. Peterson is going to be talking about it. And also we will be appointing a new junior commissioner due to graduation. Mayor, those are the two items that I have.
Thank you very much. Councilman Orjiaka.
Mayor, I don't have much to say. Thank, uh... Let me use this. Okay, for thanking Dr. Karazi for boldly repeating our stand. I'm very happy for what he said and it's, it's what we stand for. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Embarrassan, I almost called you Doc. I think of you as-
I got two in my house.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so last couple of weeks, we did a number of things. We had a planning board meeting, there was a development that was approved on Hamilton Street with a huge support from the local community, so that was see. Oftentimes we hear people coming in opposition to projects. There was also an interesting presentation by the Somerset County Engineering Department on the Eastern Avenue Corridor Project. That's a traffic study, that's a multi-year project, and that's one of the first meetings that they presented pretty much the data on the traffic study. That data is on the website by the county. I encourage you to take a look at it. And they welcome any feedback from the citizens in terms of providing some ideas or issues that they are facing. But they're going to come up with some solutions to relieve traffic and if the federal Department of Transportation approves those ideas, then they will fund it and it'll take a few more years for the project to be complete. Hopefully that would relieve the traffic congestion to certain extent. They're not going to be able to solve it, but hopefully we'll get some relief. I also attended the Juneteenth Parade. It's a great event, as usual, every year. We have been going there for a number of years now. Good speakers, a lot of organizations set up tents and we had a good time. Also the graduation, it was fantastic. Do you know 578 high school students graduated this year? It was fantastic. In fact, it was, it was very hot in the afternoon, so it was moved from 3 o'clock to 5:30 in the evening, so it was a wonderful event. Congrats to the daughter of Councilwoman Udine, she's going to Rutgers and in New Brunswick. It was a great occasion to see them together. Took a picture for them. Then that, I met with the good folks from, of AMCA, the Y, otherwise called, and they are putting together a fundraising team and I agreed to serve on the steering committee for the fundraising activities, so that's going to be happening in the next few years. It's a welcome addition to the township and they're also focusing on our neighboring towns in terms of raising funds. More details would follow shortly. Other than that, there was, we welcome another cannabis shop in the Kingston area of town called City Roots. It's the place where Gino was before. It's hidden from the main street, so you cannot really see it. It's a small boutique shop. Assemblyman Danielson tells us that that's the kind of shop that they envisioned at the state level when they passed the law. And promote local businesses, family-owned businesses as opposed to huge corporations coming in and setting up shops. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Francois.
Yeah, I would just like to thank our Dr. Karazi, our councilman, esteemed councilman Karazi, Alex Karazi, for the work that you've done even before you became a member on this council and the work you continue to do and the partnerships that you've continued to evolve and explore and maintain with the Interfaith Council. I think your leadership here on this board is exemplary and I do appreciate all the work that you're doing in the community. And, you know, a lot of times when people become on city council, things that they used to do before they became a politician, they pushed to the wayside. But I think it's really, really important that he maintained the, the level of excellence that he's had before even becoming a politician and maintain that relationship and embody what you've been doing in the Interfaith Council. So I just want to thank you for your leadership and work that you're doing in our community to bring about peace. Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Wright.
Our esteemed clerk was like, why didn't you start over here like you always do? You know, so she, it took her off guard.
Got him mixed it up.
He apologized. Couple of things in that thing-
No, wait, no, I didn't.
Loving you. Couple of things right quick, and the township manager would be the, the one to answer this question. I didn't, but I'm more sure he got a headache on this one. There's a sign on the Mont Lane, they had an issue with the wording on it for Mr. Biden and the email came to me-
I, I think that's what we all just addressed earlier, councilman.
Yeah, obviously, you know, it, it came to me and I don't know if it came to everybody else, but-
I've gotten many on it.
We've gotten probably about a hundred of them.
Yes, all the time.
Yeah, okay.
And that's what I just addressed and the mayor just-
Whenever I get one, I call the person.
Right. I didn't know. So Bob, that's why you get paid a million dollars, I tell you.
No, that's why your township attorney gets paid a million dollars, I get paid 10 bucks.
My second thing, we just had Juneteenth Franklin Township a week ago and I want, I want to say outstanding event as usual. And I love my fraternity, Omega SciFi fraternity, because along with the other Black Greek led organizations, we had a float and outstanding. I just want to say it was outstanding and the vendors that we have and more importantly, the, the sounds of freedom. And when I say the sounds of freedom, the performers were there. And if you paid attention to some of them, well, all of them, they gave you a little snippet, a little nugget for you to chew on that told you this is what we are, this is what happened, and this is where we're going. To that event, I like that. Next year, I hope to have a bigger one. And again, everyone's invited, no matter color, shape, size, form, everyone can attend because we all know what it's like to be put under the thumb of another majority or minority. So we need to express our gratitude, not just for us, but for everyone. So it's an every-person parade, do come out for it. Recreation Advisory Committee, Summer Concert, June 28th from 6 to 8 p.m. at the Township Gazebau. I know we're going to love this. It's called Total Soul. And from what I understand, I haven't seen them, but everyone else has, that it's guaranteed to be a barn burner. Ain't that right, Ms. Francois? Have you seen them?
No, I haven't.
You haven't seen them? Because I've gotten all these emails saying that this is going to be the crew that knock out. So I, I plan on being there for this event. And also, we have VIP parking pass, don't you just love it? And this is for our Franklin Township fireworks on Wednesday, the 3rd, 2024. So all of you come out to our fireworks. Now, there are a lot of townships that don't have fireworks. We do. And people from other townships come out and hang with us. So I advise all you Franklin, if you want to get a good parking spot, come early. That way you get your spot and indeed have a good time with us because we will have a good time. All my fellow council members will be there. I don't know if they'll be wearing bells and whistles, but they'll be there. And that, I think, yeah, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Udine.
Thank you. Um, let's see, so Councilman Dr. Karazi, thank you for your words. A lot of folks that may not know Dr. Karazi, Councilman has very strong ties with our community, so appreciate all the relationships that he brings in and the skills. I think it helps us, we're all very diverse in our career paths and just our skills. It's so nice to have Councilman Karazi provide his inputs and be with our team. So thank you again for your words. Franklin High School graduated, I attended a couple of graduations last week. CJCP had graduation ceremony and Franklin High School. So thank you to my peers, Councilman Embarrassan and Dr. Karazi, Councilman Karazi, who got me videotaping and Sami Shabban, who got some pictures, very close-up professional pictures of me and my daughters. Thank you again. I think when you have peers like that, like who needs the paparazzi, right? They're amazing. So thank you again. And congratulations to all the seniors that graduated. Juneteenth, I missed the event because I have a very young adult who is going to Rutgers, so I had to attend a couple of sessions of the tour of Rutgers University that day. So I heard that the event was amazing, but I couldn't make it. We'll be there next year. We do have, with, when you mentioned Friday, June 28th, there's the summer concert. So with that, June 29th, we have the Eat Celebration, the annual Eat Celebration, which is our second year doing it this year. That's happening in the Hamilton Street campus. We had it originally at Samson G., but because of the overwhelming positive response from the community, we have over 500 guests that have reserved. So we are excited to see everyone on Saturday, June 29th, starts at 5 p.m. We have Kawali Musical Night that's happening, so we have a band that's coming in with seven members with their whole sound system. So it's going to be a very fun, fun filled evening. And then we have bone artists and face paint for the kids from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. So it's a family event. Everyone is welcome to join. Please do be there because I think we have also many elected officials coming in from various of our surrounding cities and towns. And I think that wraps it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Vasanella.
I want to, I know they all left, but congratulate, I know, the chaplains that were here and applaud our director, safety director's efforts that I was not as aware of the wonderful results until this evening of expanding what probably is more important now than ever in the field of law enforcement, and that is to have some resources to deal with the many things that they deal with, which are, I don't know how they do it, quite frankly. But congratulations to those chaplains and to our Public Safety Director for enhancing that program. I'll be a little less formal, Alex, which is how I met the man, several years ago. I, enough was said about your work with the Interfaith Committee, so I don't want to be repetitive. I did get a, I do think of things when I'm hearing our, these council comments, and no one has to jump in now, but I'm actually wondering, we have so many liaisons, I don't know if we technically have a liaison to our Interfaith Committee. So not to get into that now, but understandably, and I'll, I'll move into my main, what I was saying, you have to readjust when you get on council. Whatever, especially if you're involved the way Alex, my friend Alex, has been in the community, or if you've been here like myself for many, many decades, or whatever the reason is, you could be new to the town, but you need to, it's a, I want to say sometimes a difficult transition because there's a lot of things you, I say, say can't do, but need to approach much differently than you're used to as a, and I don't mean you, only Mr. Karazi tonight, any of us, I'm sure, went through a transition period, but usually you're not dealing with something quite as sensitive and delicate and upsetting as the issue we've been dealing with. But I want also expand on that, the first, before I got on council, the first township committee I ever served on was the Health Board, and all, a health advisor. And although we had a fantastic, and I know Bob knows many people served on it back then, most of them are gone now, as much as it was a great advisory board, I'm glad to see that it's going wonderful places and that you're our liaison there. Moving along real quick, civics, somebody mentioned civics. I don't think there's, other than health and safety and, well, maybe keeping our infrastructure intact, to, to encourage and open opportunities for people to engage in civics is so important, whether it's to a grammar school-aged child or a senior citizen that is looking to put their time to use in their community. So we do a lot, we're open to doing more in a general sense of engaging people in civics. You're welcome to bring your idea to me or any council person you're comfortable with. Fourth of July is coming up, I think I heard it mentioned. Our fourth is our third. The third is to become the new fourth for Franklin. I think the last couple of years, we had that as our date. This year, it's the third, if my information, the mayor just stepped out, is correct. Hopefully we won't get weathered out like we did with our Memorial Day. Seems like every year something gets Franklin, this one of our great celebrations gets canceled or changed because of the weather, but let's hope that, that stays intact, especially since Memorial Day Parade did not happen unfortunately. We did not have a Public Safety Committee meeting tonight because we had the Health Advisory Board and we usually have that prior to our meeting. I'm not going to get into the details concerning Eastern Avenue. Councilman Rom explained general of the larger projects. Many of you may know, I had a town hall meeting a month ago, a little over a month ago now, that got into some shorter-term initiatives and I'm not going to go into detail tonight because I wanted to get some information from, confirm some information with our manager, who's been helpful in this process, and our Public Safety Director. But we're doing some local initiatives, I say we, the county and the town, with helping East Avenue become a self, a safer, better-maintained corridor. So probably the next meeting or two, get into a little bit more detailed update on what I think are good things. I have the mantra, I want more, and I'll keep repeating that probably as long as I live in this township, but I'm pleased that some of these short-term initiatives are starting to move forward. I apologize, I don't want to repeat other things that were mentioned by other council people, if I could avoid it, and I think that's all I have for today, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Petaz.
I want to extend appreciation to Dr. Karazi, Councilman. We ran for school board many years ago, I can't even remember the year, I'm trying to think back, I'm just going to leave it at that. And also Councilman Udine for, for their tremendous, I would say courage and, and, you know, the challenges as long with, well, with the mayor, you know, as we've, we've talked through the, the resolution. I also want to give a shout-out to Councilman Udine because of the tremendous satisfaction it is to have a child graduate. And I think back to my education days and when I was- And I think back to my education days, and when I was on the school board, you know, all the trials and tribulations throughout a year, and, you know, watching graduates go across that stage, and the joy in their eyes and in their families' eyes, it's just tremendous. So a lot of love to you, and happy graduation to everybody. Special appreciation to the parents, those who were parents by birth, those who became parents by vicinity, as well as the teachers and the administrators and the whole community, because it does take a whole community to raise a child, to be successful. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Think I have anything? Your manager.
I would like to thank Councilman Wright and Councilman Vasanella and who are giving my report tonight. Good job. You covered everything that I needed to cover already. Fireworks and concerts and all of the like. There is one, I'll just, that you all missed, and now, we were talking about it, Councilwoman Udine, Councilwoman Udine asked me about it earlier before the meeting. The Planning Board's business and industry-sponsored master plan study is having a public meeting, a community meeting, to meet with the consultant at the Planning Board-engaged Brightview Engineering to do both the traffic study as well as the planning study. So it is this Thursday, the 27th, at 7 p.m. right here in this room, for anyone who is interested in that. And I, I'm surprised that no one has asked me, but I will give you the report that I received this week from Dr. Ravalli on the Construction Trade Program that the Township Council chose to fund with American Rescue Plan funds. There are, it begins on July 1st. Most of the materials necessary to run the class have been received or are anticipated to be received next week. And there are 24 students involved, enrolled, all seniors, and they all are slated to begin on the 1st of July with a mix of students from the regular tract as well as RTS. So that is on track to begin on July 1st. And I think that that might be it.
Thank you. There are new council discussion items. Approving of the minutes. I present the following minutes to the Township Council for their approval. Township show work session, regular meeting, and executive session on May 28th, 2024. Do we have a motion on the minutes?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved in, seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion carried. Do we have to vote on minutes?
Councilwoman Anderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes, even though I wasn't here.
Councilman Karazi?
Good job.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petasnik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Order of the warrants, time to pay the bills in the amount of $2,180,753.02 on June 25th, 2024, were presented to Township Council for payment. Do we have a motion on the warrants?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved in, seconded, any discussion, anyone would like to pull an item? Adam Clerk.
Councilwoman Anderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petasnik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Time for ordinances on second reading. This is where we vote on the ordinance. Ordinance 44, 4724, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 183, property maintenance by adding new Article 8, privately-owned salt storage is presented for the township public hearing and final adoption. Public hearing has been noticed as required. Do we have a motion to open public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved in, seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. We're open to the public on this item only.
Seeing no one looking to speak on this item, Mayor, I motion to close the public hearing on the ordinance.
Seconded.
Moved in, seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion is carried. Do we have a motion on the item?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved in, seconded, any discussion on it? This is, people have to contain the salt that they have for salting roads if they own it privately, so that it doesn't get into our stormwater. Any other discussion?
Councilwoman Anderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petasnik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Excuse me. Ms. Ali, if I could put upon you to wait until the meeting is over? I would...
Pardon?
We're not in trouble.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Ordinance on introduction and first reading, this is when we introduce to the public that we're going to consider an ordinance, 4438-24, an ordinance amending the code of the township Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Police Department, Section 50-5, divisions and bureaus. The foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption, first reading and posting and publication in accordance with law, public hearing and final adoption, and a meeting at the Township Council to be held on Tuesday, July 9th, 2024, at 7 p.m. in the council chambers. Do we have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. This is a change to an ordinance of three words, renaming divisions and bureaus. Do we have any other discussion? Adam Clerk.
Councilwoman Anderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petasnik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Ordinance 4448-24, ordinance amending the municipal code of the township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 226, vehicles and traffic, Section 226-17, vehicles over designated weight exceeding, excluded from certain streets, that Cedar Avenue and Griggs Street. The following ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption, first reading and posting and publication in accordance with law, public hearing and final adoption, and a meeting at the Township Council, held on Tuesday, July 9th, 2024, at 7 p.m. in the Township. Motion to introduce?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved in, seconded. Discussion? This is limiting Cedar Avenue and Griggs Street to four tons. Other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Anderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petasnik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Consent agenda. Items A through O is listed in the consent agenda portion of this meeting are presented to Township Council for adoption. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved in, seconded. Does anyone like to pull an item or bring out an item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I think your mic is on.
You're not, I couldn't hear you, Councilman.
I'm sorry?
I couldn't hear you.
Oh. Number I and number N, if you can please, so some, you know, he's not here to hear the reply to this.
That's okay.
They ask for information on these things, but never stays to hear them, but I think all the other members would love to hear about it. And number D, sidewalks, I mean sidewalks has been a thing that we've done for a very long time.
Well, I'll answer letter I, and letter D and letter N. I don't know any numbers like that.
Well, you know what I mean. Help a brother out.
I'll start with I. I is insertion into the calendar year municipal, 2024 municipal budget, a grant that is received annually to provide meals to those children in our summer camp program. So, and D is authorizing a change order on sidewalks that were installed because it came in slightly at a different number than what was budgeted. I believe that it came in slightly over budget by...
About 8,000.
About 8,000. I was gonna say under 10, which is with, well within the 10% margin permitted on change orders. And what was it? N was the other one? I have it on the computer, Alex, that's fine.
What are name replacements?
Authorize the execution of grant agreement, Franklin Township. This one's kind of funny. This is where the federal government often doesn't make much sense. So the township of Franklin received American Rescue Plan funds, and we are utilizing a portion of those American Rescue Plan funds to install replacement water mains in our town that are under the control of the township's water utility. And the federal government says that you, the Township Council, have to authorize the granting of the money to your own water utility. And I'm not quite sure why they are saying that we have to do that, but that's what we've been told we have to do. So that's what that is for. That is to expend American Rescue Plan funds on water main replacements here in Franklin Township under the control of our water utility.
Now, just one more piece of that, since we, you know, getting through that. How many more water main pipes, is that gonna be a continuing thing that we're just gonna keep building?
You will continue to replace water mains until long beyond all of us are here.
So is that a set amount that every...
So yes, the anticipation is that the useful life of a water main in its current form, the new type of materials used in water mains, is about 100 years. In past iterations, it was 50 years. So you generally would replace pipes at a rate, you know, that falls in line with that useful life of the pipe, based on the amount of pipe that you have. So it's anticipated that we will continue to replace water mains within our water system forever. It's just only a small portion of it every year.
Now, another question. And I've been looking at this, and I guess we've been going around and around, because we were looking to do some replacement over area, Councilman Vasanella's neighborhood and mine.
Yes.
And when I look at...
Ward, not neighborhood, I just want to be clear.
In your ward neighborhoods, but...
Looking at the fourth ward and doing some of our water main replacements, is that a special need area? Because I know...
Well, so there's a couple different factors involved here. One, that section in the Hamilton Street corridor is the oldest portion of our water system, some of it having been inherited from New Brunswick when we first created a water utility in 1958. But the, so, but the decision on where to use American Rescue Plan funds is also driven by the fact that the federal government had encouraged that Rescue Plan funds be utilized for this purpose, one, and in census tracts that exhibited the most need from a, from a financial standpoint of its residents.
Thank you. That's what I was trying to bring up, because some people want to know, how does that work? Where do we replace them? Is that just a one-off? You know, somebody thinks about where we're going and...
The water, the water mains are being replaced, I mean, in some cases, all over town, based on age and history of main breaks and things of that nature. But in particular, the Rescue Plan funds were focused on the fourth and fifth wards in that general vicinity of the Hamilton Street corridor, which also coincides with, like I said, the oldest portion of our water utility system.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
It's not the belated subject. I just had a technical question. Our manager, Alair, could probably answer. I couldn't be happier, and the seat is on there. And Councilman Wright, I could tell you that this whole area has been slated, actually several years ago, so I'm glad to see this is happening, because we all know what happens when you have road and lane breaks. So I had a question. Yes, Mayor? I'm sorry, I'm just happy to see this on here. I know it gets tricky with the grant, the federal grants, and I know from being involved with this, of public work meetings, that there's a possibility that we're not sure exactly what streets, although we know they're gonna be in that area. I just wanted to make sure there's no technicality here, that if we add or delete a street based on when they start to do the design elements and figure out the, you know, what we can afford to do as much as we can, do we have to have any street that we possibly incorporate into these projects on here? Or is there any technical? I know it gets very tricky with the federal funding, like if we wanted to add a street because we can do these two but not this one here.
You can only do what we have funding for.
No, I mean, but the way they're listing...
So it will be fully expended, whatever the, and it will then probably be supplemented with normal water utility budget money. It's, I, there's not, it's not a question of adding streets. This money is, will be utilized to fund water main projects in that area that we've identified and I've just spoken about.
So I guess maybe I didn't learn that right. If we find that, we can add another street in need in that same neighborhood?
I think you're missing my point. It's not, it's, it will not do all of the streets at, to begin with. So we won't be adding streets.
All right, got you.
You're going to be supplementing with municipal water utility.
I see. Okay. Now, I understand, Mayor. In all the breakdowns in our PW meeting, so we didn't see per street because we hadn't got to that point, but what you're saying is we'll probably have to throw a little rate payer, or a little of our water funding in.
Not probably, you will.
Yeah, we will. Okay. So I got you now, I understand. Thank you. And that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'd like to just mention item number M. The township is helping the school build Sioux Falls Health Clinic. The bids came in higher than expected, so we're kicking in half of the increase, and that's why this is on the H. But we're bringing healthcare to the masses. Anyone else? Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Anderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petasnik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Done, Rich.
There are no resolutions to be voted on separately. All business boards, committees, commissions, anyone have a nomination?
I do, actually a couple. Jessica Johnson was a full member of the Environmental Commission, resigned, and I think they sent that over your way to the Clerk's office. I want to nominate Robin Sedam, who is currently an alternate two, to the regular member for Jessica Johnson's position, that's ending December 31st, 2025. And then to fill the alternate two member position, Ellen Vastola, V-A-S-T-O-L-A, of 43 Norwick Place, also ending December 31st, 25.
Do we have any other nominations for those positions?
Mr. Mayor, there are two applications. One for Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, and the other one for Advisory Recreation Council, which they have openings, each one has one opening. So the first one is by Mr. Robert Akwai, if I'm pronouncing the last name correctly. And the other one is by Mr. Fahad Achter. So these positions are open and they have application.
Do we have any other nominations for those positions? So we can do these all by acclamation? So we can do these all by acclamation? Um, those in favor, say aye.
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 Putting here who nominated.
Oh. The resumes, the applications are in the packet.
Yeah. Um, the nomination, Councilwoman, is for Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, and that's Mr. Robert Akoi. And also for the advisory recreation council is Mr. Fahad Akhtar.
Can I ask for a roll call on Fahad Akhtar?
Um, sure. Uh, so we'll do the other three by acclamation. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. So we'll do roll call on Fahad Akhtar. Do any discussion?
Well, I'm not sure if folks are familiar with him. Um, I, 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 something else happened. I think we received an email from the individual, and I did some Googling, um, and I have some concerns, so I'm going to be a no vote.
You want a motion to table?
Maybe we could table it, so folks could have another, uh, more time to consider. Uh, movingly table, the nomination of Akhtar, uh, excuse me, first name, Fahad Akhtar.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So a motion and a second to table, the only thing that can be discussed is, uh, when to table it. Uh, does anyone have any discussion? Table it, too.
W. Mayor, did you have any suggestion?
You can table indefinitely. Table it. Table it indefinitely, okay? Um, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Any other boards, committees, commission vacancies? We have no executive session. We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion is carried. Be well, Franklin.